All right, we'll call the Select Board meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, amendments to the agenda? Are there any amendments needed?
Yes, sir, I have two amendments tonight. One to discuss the parade this year under, I guess, new business. And attorney-client communications under executive session, which is 1 VSA 313 A1.
Okay, any other changes needed? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We didn't have one, actually, sorry. We'll rewind a second.
Rewind, I'll make a motion to, for the two amendments to the agenda of the parade under new business and attorney-client privilege under executive session.
Okay, is there a second? Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion on the amendments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, appointment with the Energy Committee. So last meeting, we appointed a few more members to, I believe, one-year terms back to the Energy Committee. Neil had contacted me a month or so ago, just wanting to kind of meet with the Select Board, meet with the Energy Committee, kind of see what the Energy Committee's thoughts are, ideas, you know, have the Select Board throw their thoughts and ideas around and kind of see where we're at. So I don't know who's speaking for the Energy Committee. Do you want to start, Neil, or Bob, or?
Neil.
Neil, okay. Go ahead, Neil.
I drew up kind of a little history, you know, in terms of why we're here, how we got here. Some of you will recall the signing we had made up for the vote. At the time, the reason we had the vote, quite frankly, is there was opposition from some of the Select Board members that felt it wasn't feasible, couldn't make money. And we felt otherwise and went to the voters and they didn't approve this particular vote. Chris was there, Bob was there. I'm glad to see you guys here. Appreciate that. The next thing we had was the feasibility study, which was voted in. As I recall, I think the voters approved something like $10,000. Was that kind of along that line? And I hope you have a copy of this, I do. That's the original one. Pete Ruby and I went over to visit him. Jay, when I say him, Jim, Jay, I never quite pronounce his last name.
Well, Larry.
Okay. Hopefully you got it right. Which was as interesting as Orin Hartland. He was the right guy to do the study. This is actually quite a history of the dam. It's really good. Anyway, and then, interestingly enough, we had two Select Board members on the committee. Chris was one of them. And to Chris's credit, he would have had, under the protestations, if you will, some of the Select Board members that didn't think it was reasonable and decided he thought it was. And I always respected him for that. I thought that was an interesting stand and it really helped us out that felt it was. The next thing I mentioned is, this came out, and I can't recall who the lady's name was, but she was an engineer, and perhaps you could refresh me. She pointed out that at that time, Fairhaven was about the only existing, with a possible exception of one other community, where the community actually owned the existing dam, or a dam that was there at one time and had not taken it up. And surprisingly, that was a saving grace for us because at the time, for whatever reason, the determination had been made by the state there could be no more new dams put in. Which is kind of interesting now to think about. So here we are, we still had the remnants of the old dam, so we were on safe grounds in terms of that. We're pretty excited over that. Simultaneously or shortly after that, there was a huge battle between Rockingham. I don't know if you've ever been over to Falls and looked at that hydro plant over there. And at the time, they had a new grant list on the value of the dam, which was generating electricity for GMP. And GMP protested it. It said, "You feel it's far worth a lot more." And he did go to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court ruled in favor of Rockingham. And you're talking big money, big money. So again, we were quite excited over that, we said, "Wow." And then we ran into, the next thing, as I recall, along that line, was we had a purchase and property sales agreement. It was agreed by, with it, when it was to take place, by Brad Stevens. I found that just recently, he has sold that property. It's adjacent to, so that plays into this one way or the other, however we proceed. And I would finish up with this whole thing with a couple of things. I think time is different this time than the last time. And I say that because the last time, there was no green movement in Vermont, no green movement nationally, and obviously, there was no COVID money. And they're throwing around COVID money like the things they're funding. I think, okay, maybe they all merit it. But one would think that a dam for a municipality owned by a municipality is certainly a renewable source. The green movement, of course, is predicated upon making Vermont renewable, though as much as 50%, I think, whatever, 20, 30 or something? Well, one of the things about hydro is that with the exception of nuclear, it's a cleanest and most efficient, if there is, and far less costly. And obviously, it doesn't emit anything but carbon dioxide. So, and it's a renewable resource. So why not us? Why not, I feel strongly, it's our turn, our time to get money, help funding on that. In other words, capitalizing on the whole thing, if we try. I think we're in better shape this time, oddly enough, than we were back in 2014. And as far as additions to the committee, I was really glad to see the ones showed up, they did. They did. I never thought standing up there and got into it a few times.
Me?
No, you never did, you were talking about, but. But anyway, I spoke recently with Pete Ruby. And he surprised me, I asked him, "Would you be willing to get involved?" Because Pete's kind of a, "Let's stop." Pete said, "Yeah, he would be." And the thing about Pete Ruby, I'd known him for a long time, he was the only member on our committee that actually had experience in dam building and hydro, et cetera. And he's got even more experience in that since then. On a couple of projects he's working on, and he's networking with some people that could really help us out on this in terms of geologists, in terms of hydrologists, you name it. So I'm sure he would be willing to participate in that. And I said, "Well, if necessary, would you be receptive to a phone call?" And he said, "Well," I said, "He said, 'This is going to surprise you, you'll be surprised if I show up.'" So I think that's, you know, and perhaps we could recruit a couple more people. But I think we got a good core people, I'm pleased to see people on board that, it would have been awfully easy to give up on this thing, and I think it'd be a big mistake, if only from the standpoint that our taxpayers have committed 10 grand, have a study done, and then what happened? So I think I've said what I can say. I'm willing to put whatever time I can on it. But I think, oddly enough, I do think it's more doable today than it was back then. We thought, "Why not us?" And I think we have a better battle right now going on for it than we had back then. So, anybody else want to say anything? I haven't.
Others, Bob?
The only thing I'd say is that Neil makes a good point about the green economy. That's something I hadn't even thought about. We're up against a court ruling up in Mooretown, Morrisville, that, for the life of me, I don't understand why it equates to us because it was about fish population. But I, to be honest with you, the truth being known, it was probably an easy way out for the state to say, "No, you're not going to qualify because of this ruling." It's a different world than it was just a couple of years ago, so the possibilities are there. The feasibility study is there. It doesn't really change, it just moves forward and you're probably looking at a different set of numbers. But it's just moved forward. And if, and I think that the biggest, scariest number was a $5 million bond issue. If that could be mitigated with monies, the recovery monies that are all over the place, that would be nice. And that's a possibility that I hadn't even considered. So credit to Neil for thinking of that. I hate to see it go by the board. I think we're probably farther away from it now than we were two or three years ago. As far as organization and where we're at, and nobody's talked to Jay in a long time, that kind of thing like that. It would take a little bit of, you know, backpedaling to get up to speed again and see if there's anything has changed. It might be worth doing that investigation, at least that much. Then we can at least say, "Here's what we got, what do you want us to do?" Or "What do you want to do?" is actually the, it's worth trying. I mean, there are other things we probably should be thinking about as energy, green, whatever you want to call it, stuff for the town, but it would be nice to be able to get that dam going. It would be, it's a 25-year payback, not a lot of us are going to be there that long, but somebody will benefit.
Neil, did you have a follow?
You know, one thing I would recommend, that we had at least a Select Board member on this committee. I think that was invaluable to have. We had Chris and we had, maybe it was Bob, regardless, we had two. And I think it was valuable to have somebody that could tell the committee, "Yeah, this is what's going on," because you're talking pretty big stakes here. And you're talking about something that would be unique to this community. And I think it'd be a good message to send to a lot of people if we were successful with it, to have a bond, et cetera, younger people, whatever, that will be dead and gone by the time that bond is up, whatever. But I think it would show that we're not just interested in ourselves. We want our grandchildren and whatever to have the benefits of something that generates electricity and that eventually would pay for itself and be paid for. I says, "I don't know many projects that are like that." And we did have, as you noticed on that petition we sent around, at that time, had we been successful, the monies that would have been derived from the power at that time, which obviously, to kill a lot hours, were less money, would have paid for all of the public schools and the power of Fairhaven's electricity. That's quite a statement, and I suspect it would be even worth more today. So, having said that, I just throw that out because it's, it was kind of fun to have Select Board members on the committee because they did the work. I got on the board later and you just had better feedback. What went on with the Energy Committee this week? They were there. Anyway, I know you guys got your table full. I think this is one project that's so big and seemingly right. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Chris, do you have? Stuff that you want to?
Ask quickly. Has there ever been like a mission statement or a job description of what the Energy Committee is responsible for? I think that might be helpful in terms of giving us some direction of what we should be pursuing. And, you know, I agree with Bob that I think that the Energy Committee is more than just a hydro project. I think there's a lot of things that we could focus on in town to save energy, identify where we're using the energy, and if we can, look into something to generate energy.
Are there questions for the committee?
Well, the answer is there is no mission or job description yet.
No.
I don't write the.
It was really focused on the hydro, I think. That was the main mission, I think, five, 10 years ago. You know, that.
Well, you touched on, I think, the street lighting.
We did some street lighting, little projects like that, but.
That's kind of, we probably should start low like that, keep the.
Bigger project, yeah.
Keep the hydro in focus and do the research. But there are little things to do. And there's one thing I wanted to mention that we didn't, and when I was on the board, we didn't do anything about it, but the town has a very low grid. I don't know what the right term is. We have, in terms of hooking other people onto the town's power, their allotment of power, we don't have much.
They're supposed to be coming through, right?
I don't know where that is. That's something that we should, you guys should chase, and if we can help.
Yeah, of the existing station down behind the school, right?
Yeah. It's very substandard for today.
Down by the dam, there was no power, no capacity left.
Right.
Yeah.
And the capacity was all on the north end of town, four megawatts.
Right, right.
But it costs inordinate amounts of money to get to it. They really misrepresented the capacity that was there in that meeting, because they said, "Oh, there's a ton of capacity up there." But you got to spend a bazillion dollars to get to it. And it killed.
Some of that seems like it's Green Mountain's responsibility, that they're upgrading all around here.
I think they're taking, they're looking for people to help them upgrade.
Right, right.
And they're trying to do it on someone else's nickel.
Yeah, and, but I mean, it's something that should be, we should, the town should focus on. And if the Energy Committee can help, that would be, that would be good. And it would also help the dam, because then you've got transmission power.
It might be millions to connect the dam.
Right, exactly, exactly. But if the power's upgraded, then that's not necessarily the case.
Glenn, go ahead.
Well, just wanted to respond to some of Chris's comments about, I think it'd be an excellent idea for the Energy Committee that was focused pretty much on the hydro to do something like, put some bylaws together. And that's, and with that, and that's not really, I don't see totally us telling you what that should be. I think you get together, talk amongst yourselves to where, what you see, you know, you've been working closer to it than we have, and then that set of bylaws that helps with the mission. I also agree with, you can do multiple things. If you're looking for what kind of direction, as a Select Board member, I'd like to see solar looked at, absolutely, like to your point there, Bob. And there might be other things that we don't have out there, but if you're doing the right stuff, just tell us how we need to support you and do whatever we can to do that.
Well, the basics are us to start and you guys something that, if it looks like it's too far reaching, you can get the red pen out.
But definitely, I don't think there's any disagreement about pursuing hydro. I mean, that project's still viable, in my opinion.
Well, it's.
There's a lot of variables.
Depending on the power company.
Correct.
If we built the project today, it would go nowhere.
What happened with the RECs? The renewable energy credits?
I don't know where they're at now. The last, the last thing that, the last feasibility study for the dam was at 50%. We figured, all the money was figured at 50% with RECs, and I have no idea where they are now. That's a legitimate question to ask, that's one of the ones we should know, obviously. And the other thing to do is reconnect with Jay Valeri and see where he's at. Think in things that, you know, he can tell us straight up whether we are still in the running or time was past. But I don't think it has, and I think, I think some of the points brought up today were already, were things that make a lot of sense to green economy and that kind of thing.
Other feedback? No? All right, so you guys are moving forward. It's some groundwork, working on the hydro, and then some of the smaller projects that might be out there for us to tackle. Sounds good?
And when would they come back? Month?
Back in a month, if that's a great.
So it doesn't get lost?
A month enough to get grouped together, get some meetings?
Okay, can we count on someone on the Select Board, Peter?
Anybody?
Yes, I think.
Don't everybody volunteer? I'm on about three committees right now, I'm almost.
There should be somebody, maybe we can figure it out at the end of the meeting. We'll draw straws.
Maybe once we ascertain that, then we can formalize our, you know. And one of the people, incidentally, that Pete is privy to is somebody he went to college with. My name is a geologist. He's going to be up in this area where it would be in the summer. So I'm sure we can tap into it. We never had that kind of experience or anybody, you know, we were just freelancing everything. I got a feeling we've got more going for us in terms of people with experience because of just networking with different people and the projects that he's involved in.
Neil, do you know if there's funding still left in the reserve account? Was there any funding left in the reserve account, do you know?
I don't know if there's.
I don't know, that's a good question.
I know they use.
I don't think we spent the entire 10 grand.
Yeah.
Probably not a lot.
Oh, all right.
It's worth, I mean, it's there. Whatever's there, there hasn't gone any faster. We haven't spent money in a long time.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Well, good, thanks for coming in.
Appreciate it.
Here's the part I don't hate.
You can stay.
We'll find you more committees.
Yeah, I don't think it, I worry, all the other committees are on my golf night. I blew that one.
Mistake.
Approval of the minutes for April 20th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 20th, as written.
Is there a second? Motion by Glenn, seconded by Rod, to approve the minutes. Any corrections needed? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries. Five minutes for public comment.
This is your time to show your.
Public comment? Go ahead.
I'm Rachel, I'm representing Scott Hill Brewing Company, which we're coming soon.
Scott Hill what?
What's that? Scott Hill Brewing Company, yeah.
Oh, I guess that.
I just wanted to bring up a concern of mine, being a business owner on Main Street, and that's the issue of the smokers. And I know all of you have seen them, because you drive by every day and you see them sitting out on the stoop. And I'm concerned for a few reasons. First of all, I think, you know, the EDC, my husband and I, we're trying very hard to invest in this community and to develop the economy. And Main Street is important. And I feel like, not to sound like the bad guy, but having people sit on a stoop and smoke gives this town a poor image. And I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the fact that they're throwing cigarette butts into historic buildings. And we all know from history that buildings have burned on Main Street. They're old, a lot of them are not to code. And it's a concern. You know, being an owner of a historic building and seeing people carelessly throw their cigarette butts at my wooden storefront, I'm concerned. And especially when these are tenants of people who have insurance companies in these buildings. So I'm sure you can see the irony in that. So I'm concerned about it from that perspective. And also, I'm concerned about how it's going to affect our business once we do open. If we are able to get outside seating, I don't want to deter people from sitting outside because they have to look at that and smell it. And I'll be honest, that there's been a smoker adjacent to our building where we can smell it inside our building when they stand out front. And it's offensive. And I just want to know, is there a way to find a solution to this? You know, is there a way to either work with tenants who have smokers in their building? Or is there a way to ban smoking on Main Street or designate an area? I don't know, but I have multiple concerns about it. And I'm not trying to be the bad guy, I'm trying to make Fairhaven a better place. And I think I have some valid concerns. So if there's something I can do, research other towns, how they address smoking on Main Street. I don't know if there's already policies that other towns follow or precedents that have been set, but I'm happy to do whatever light work to make it better.
Is there state law?
I can, if you like. I'm a health officer right now.
Hi.
It is by velocity stature, it's illegal to smoke within 25 feet of the entrance of any building like Downstreet. Or this building. So they can't smoke in front of any of those buildings, insurance office, your place, the next place next door, or up at senior housing.
Even residential?
Even residential.
I don't know if that's. I worked for a ledge company with 2,000 people that went to a non-smoking campus, and you'd think it'd be easy.
It's not easy.
It's not easy, if we did it. It's not impossible. Somebody has to enforce it, and that somebody is everybody, really. You can't ask the police or the owners of the other businesses to do it. So it has to be something that, as a town, we all can agree to and ask people not to, you know, smoke.
Well, but I also feel like it should be known to the building owners, many of which are absentee owners.
Hold on, hold on one second, hold on.
That's okay. And I just feel like, at least we need to educate, if this is the route we're going to go, then we need to educate these building owners on how to address their own policies within their building. Because I don't know what those tenants do in the winter, but I guess it's too cold to smoke outside in the winter.
And I'm saying, the building that you're talking about specifically, the green building, because I did have a business on the ground there, and my brother was the manager of that building for about a year. of that building for about a year. Um, I have some experience with that building inside and.
Yeah.
Um, so this, the tenants in that building are not allowed to smoke in the building.
I figured.
Right. And so that's why they come down to smoke outside. So we asked them over and over, please don't smoke right outside the door. Don't go smoking in front of other people's businesses. Uh, but, you know, I, I think, okay, so now they're not allowed to smoke in the park. So, you know, you get people walking up and down the streets smoking. Basically, if you have kids who are smokers in winter, they have a hard time. They can't, they can't smoke anywhere. Can't smoke outside. Um, so anyway, I'm just saying.
And I understand.
Yeah, but the owners, I think the owner of that building anyway, is aware of the fact that people are not supposed to be smoking right outside. They also don't want them smoking inside. So.
I get that it's a double edged sword.
Yeah.
There has to be a solution somehow.
Yeah.
I mean, I know one of the tenants, their landlord finally said, look, you can smoke, which I even was like, can smoke out back. We just don't want to see it and we don't want to smell it. I mean, and it was fine. And they were like, okay. So I don't know if there's a way to designate something out back. I, I don't know. Or in, I don't, I don't know what the plans are for the alley, but at any rate, I just feel like if there's a way somehow or to find some kind of solution, because I'll be pretty upset if I lose business because we allow smoking on Main.
Phil, do you know, is it clearly town property down through that area? The sidewalks?
I guess that would be a gray area, wouldn't it? Without looking at the deeds, I don't exactly know. I know it's considered public property as far as open container.
Yeah.
Cigarettes don't fall under, like the same thing as alcohol in there.
I think the property lines of those buildings are these street ends of the sidewalk. Where the building ends is where the property line ends.
But there's. So do they take care of the sidewalks?
No. So.
It's a town sidewalk.
Julie, go ahead.
I just heard that there's no smoking in the park. I don't see any signs that prohibits.
I had no idea. Yeah, I had no idea.
I thought in 2019, we, we modified an ordinance that said, no smoking in the park and no smoking down, it, it just cleaned up the.
I believe so.
But I, I'm pretty sure we, as a select board, in 2019, modified the ordinance. And if we've got people smoking in the park, they shouldn't.
Maybe they don't know.
Some people from out of town wouldn't know.
Wouldn't know if we didn't have signs.
Can we?
So it sounds.
Some signs?
I think we were apprehensive about putting a bunch of signs up in the park. I think that was the.
I mean, can we word it in a way that's friendly?
Well, I understand the ordinance hasn't changed, but you couldn't smoke on the sidewalk here.
So we can look.
That's town property.
Look into that.
Let's look at the ordinance.
Bill, you had a question or comment?
I think the original, the ordinance was more targeting front of the parks and that kind of stuff. That's why I think it was.
It was, yeah.
We were directed, encouraged not to be too heavy on that. Be through, through education. You know, address, if we're there, address people like, hey, there's a counter in the park, you can't smoke. Need to go outside the ring. Basically, that was what we were doing. And then, you know, if it was a repeated violation, then we could, we would ticket them one of the town ordinance.
Could there be a section for smoking, like by the dust stop or something like that? In an area?
They'll probably gather near there.
I think it's actually outside the fence was the way, but I'd have to look at the.
I think so.
Put a place to put their butts rather than a side sidewalk. There's no appropriate way to disclose.
So, I mean, I, we've heard the concern. I think, uh, for sure, Joe can look into it, see what, what options there are. Maybe it's enforcement by the, the landowner. Maybe it's, if it is town property in that area where they are smoking, it's possibly a policy that Joe could look at.
Right. I, I, my lifetime of that too, is, is an economic development committee, when we talk about trying to fill storefrontage and everything, absolutely, it hurts us to allow smoking there. I would be curious what Rutland does and what they, what their requirements are in their downtown. It would just help us be, fairly, are we way off if we said no or we, or do they have an approach that seems to work?
Right, right.
We want to check some of that.
I don't think, we're not going to be way off to say no smoking.
I don't think so.
It's just become very unfashionable and not the right thing to do. So I don't think it would take a lot.
But I guess my point is, if we can compromise and maybe find a designated area where they can go and do their thing and dispose of their cigarettes properly, I'm just saying, if there's a way to compromise on this situation, that'd be great.
And there has to be communication with the residents here, because with no signs, they don't know.
Yeah. We have to be fair with them. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll look into it. Joe was going to spend some time looking at some policies and we'll see, see what's out there we can look at.
Thank you very much.
I don't know on the ownership of that sidewalk too.
It's town sidewalk.
It's town sidewalk.
It's town sidewalk.
I agree.
It's our sidewalk.
So, um. State of the property runs in a different spot.
Anybody else for public comment?
Follow up.
Oh, I, I'd like to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, this is just a tail on end to that. There are people in the building that are not so mobile and everything. And, you know, it's fine to say blanket, you know, they, they've got to go to the other side of town to smoke. But the ones that aren't that mobile, I realize, people don't like smokers. You know, I was a smoker. I understand. And I understand their point of view. I mean, if they can't smoke in their homes and they can't smoke in their yard, you know, it, it just, it's kind of really coming down on them as all. So that, with that being said, I just wanted to report that, um, our, our park in the park raised, um, over 5,000.
Yay.
We have now raised, um, 20,300 for the dog park. Um, figured out, you know, that what we've raised will cover the fencing, signage, hoop stations, benches, um, with a little leftover to maybe get some, you know, garden stuff, um, something for the dogs to play on. So that's all I wanted to say is that I think we're in really good shape.
Alright.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Anybody else? Alright. Uh, department head reports. Bill, do you want to go first?
Um, the last two weeks we've had, uh, we had six arrests, DUI, simple assault of one person, um, driving without a license and then violation of order protection. Um, I sent warnings to 12 River Street for junk, um, junk violations of almost every inch of the property starting to get covered. Um, with a copy of the ordinance, I sent that to the tenant and the landowner. They're actually mother and son anyways, but. Um, drug takeback day on April 24th, we collected 95 pounds of, um, drugs returned in at the station. I know the outlawing towns like Pollock was promoting bringing it to us. We were the closest one to the area, so we got a lot of out of towners to brought narcotics and subsequently got turned over to the sheriffs to go to the fence for destruction. Um, we issued 41 traffic warnings and 135 traffic tickets in the month of, um, April. Um, we've been out kind of heavy on traffic, but we only had two, three accidents for the month, so. Accidents are down. Um, we had a truck and trailer rollover last night up on Route 4. It appears that maybe via medical event, the guy came down with the guardrails and then flopped over. Um, they were out there until, I think nine o'clock last night. AOT was amazing. They came in, basically took the scene over and then called us back once they were ready to get the truck out of there, so. Um, outside of the just doing traffic, we didn't have a lot of involvement on that. No injuries. Um, I think that's all I have. Don't you guys have anything for me?
How are you doing on revenue with, uh, being out less through the winter? You probably wrote less tickets, right, through the winter?
No, actually, we started, so when coronavirus went in, what we were finding was we, when we actually started going back out, we were getting really high speeds. So I'm going to be honest here, we started picking it up again and, and we never went back to that level three response where you were only responding to emergency calls. We, we found that the risk, there was too many people. I mean, the DUI the other night was 86 and a 50, you know, up by your house on 22A. I was going to say, they're flying up there. Yeah. So we, we've been out hitting it hard trying to keep it back down because the message went out, like even the cops aren't doing anything. So we, we started pushing back out to try to do as much as possible, to be out and be highly visible. The goal is, is, is just to be visible and be seen more in town. I guess that's kind of what we're trying to do. I know there's some nights I drive through town, I'm not working and there's a police car right there, which just makes me happy to see the car. And I think everybody wants to see the car.
Martin Warren's very full on that interview either.
No.
Other questions for Bill?
Nope. Good.
Alright, thank you. Aaron's not on, is he?
Aaron is not.
Okay, we'll start with, Aaron's right up. So the spring, uh, spring and rainy weather, uh, has kind of slowed them down on the grading. Uh, some of those, some of the roads opened up potholes again. They're going to get back out and do a second round of spring grading, um, to patch those up when, uh, when weather permits. Uh, it's also slowed down some of these, uh, street sweeping. They're still out there picking away at that. A couple of manholes collapsed, one on Union and then a storm drain on Pelkey and Canarvin, which they patched both of those up. And everybody will be happy to know, uh, line striping and painting will begin this month. Um, we have a company coming in to do this professionally. Uh, on the water side.
It's in budget?
Yeah.
There's cash to do it, yes.
No, it's in budget.
We budgeted a little bit for it, but we'll be over a little bit. There's money there for it.
It's got to get done.
It does have to get done. We have turnover, uh, at Inman Pond with the water department calls turnover, uh, cold waters, uh, as the weather changes, uh, cold water sinks, hot water rises and it kind of ruffles the feathers at the plant. Uh, they're working through that and the water plant is still running well. Sewer plant, they met with the pump station, uh, Pump Station Services Incorporated, the folks that are doing the, uh, pump station upgrades. Um, they're happy with the contractor thus far and they'll be looking to start that project in the coming months. Uh, sewer plant, they've started to, the contractor started to order, uh, equipment and materials. That's an onerous process because of the federal regulations, the Buy America and, Buy American, I think there's two different regs, um, but they're looking, they're working through that too. Uh, onto the town manager, uh, we did get a letter after the last meeting, um, saying this, uh, Sandra Dinofer, I hope I said. Dinofer, is that how we say it? Um, she does not want the dog park at the playground. Yeah. It came in, I figured, uh, she wanted her voice heard. Uh, we had the fuel tank. We closed out the fuel tank here at Town Hall last year. Uh, because of the amount of oil in the ground, they had to test, they had to do test borings, um, around the area. It came back, there is no spill. So they'll button that up and we'll be done with that project, thank goodness. Um, I did finally get a, uh, an email back from the Land Water Conservation Trust. These are the folks that gave us, uh, the 50,000 for the playground. They're still a few weeks out from getting us a contract. They said at the end of this month, but they're still behind. I, I asked, it's like, because this, this process has taken so long, uh, prices have gone up. Um, they said there is, uh, supplemental cash to, to kind of cover that extra cost because it's not our fault we didn't get the money. So we'll be asking for a little bit more money for the playground. Oh, man. Oh, let's talk about invasive fish. Uh, I spoke with the biologist. He gave us some ideas of how to handle this. Um, we're going to have to pump down, we could do it two ways. I think the, the speedier way is, is probably the best option. We can, we can pump down the, uh, the pond and then shock it with just some Clorox, 5%, 5% mixture. Um, or we could pump it down and let it freeze, but that's not, that's obviously a longer term solution. Um, biologist is not concerned about Clorox. He says it'll evaporate out over time. So if the board is not opposed, I will start that process.
What about the other fish in the pond?
Yeah.
They all go, huh?
Everything's going.
Everything goes.
Anything with legs will be able to get out, will help them along, but.
That's.
That's, that's our.
We get this surprises me. I'm not going to say if it's right or wrong.
You can't just scoop them up?
You got the wetlands that are crazy regulations.
And where are you pumping the water to?
So it's going to be pumped out right, uh, in a clear area. There's going to be a net to catch the fish and then we'll dispose of the fish.
There's no way to get some out ahead because there's nowhere for them to go.
Pretty easy to see them.
Like to try to save some and what are you going to do with them?
Oh, I don't know about saving them, but, uh, it'd be pretty easy to scoop them out. You can see them. I, I went down to Lurssk.
What if you?
Very clear. They are gold.
Where's this farm?
Cemetery.
In the cedar cemetery.
So the, the trouble with just scooping, I guess, and I'm not a biologist, but this is, that's what I thought. We just net them.
The eggs?
The eggs. Yeah, because I guess there are these things that are like carp. They're, they're hearty animals and, and they don't die easy.
Well, it would buy us time though, maybe to get to fall where we could maybe just freeze instead of.
Well, what difference is it made?
It doesn't.
They're going to be dead in the end. Yeah. So it's probably better to do it sooner.
If you let it freeze, and all the turtles and.
Yep.
And salamanders that burrow in the mud to stay alive are now dead too.
But that's the biologist sanctioned plan.
Yeah.
I would say move forward with what the state is recommending for us.
We'll whack it though. Just, yeah, we just all need to be on the same page.
Yeah.
Still can't believe that the Kingfishers aren't in there or the.
Blue herons.
Yeah, blue herons, but aren't in there.
Yeah, we just, just get two blue herons.
How do you think?
Oh, we're talking parade in a minute.
Excuse me, Joe, is there any water out there? I forgot to bring my home. If there's not, that's fine. I just.
Um, there is in Jenny's office in the back corner.
Okay, I'll replace it if I take one.
Well, it's a big jug.
Okay.
Is the door open?
It, yeah.
It should be.
Karen?
Carol?
Hey, there's one. I knew you'd need one. My truck.
Anything else, Joe?
Uh, yeah, still going.
Yep.
Uh, so Bernie Sanders is looking for appropriation suggestions.
Hydro dam?
I thought that.
Five million, no idea.
It's a $5 million dam. We, uh, we can submit. It, it doesn't give us a limit.
I'd add your 20% too. $6 million dam half there.
So it's, we, we did, uh, submit the sidewalk project for our last appropriations request, which, which went nowhere fast. I was thinking the town garage, getting that up and away from the floodway. Uh, that seems to be more of a, uh, something that benefits the entire state as opposed to a sidewalk that only benefits the town of Fairhaven. So I thought that might be a, a positive. I thought that might get legs and, and have a place to go, so.
But the dam can, uh.
The power could.
Tail into Biden's plans and what he's talking about now and.
Yeah.
You got one or can you do two?
It's, we can do two.
Send them both.
It's free to send them.
Yeah?
Yeah. Okay. That's, I'll send hydro dam and, um, town garage.
But I, the, I think you've got to put money in there for Green Mountain Power.
Transmission.
The transmission, uh.
Seven million?
Well, I mean, we, we went from five to six, but, uh, I don't.
You go send. You got to justify it though, in your write-up.
Right.
So you'll have to ask somebody for a ballpark number?
Yeah.
That would know.
But the good news is that upgrading the transmission lines is also good for the entire.
For the entire area, yeah. Oh, yes.
Some, somebody at Green Mountain could give you that pretty fast ballpark that you wouldn't hold him to, I think. You don't think so?
Well, uh, we'll, I'll pull some numbers together and figure it out.
They, they might anonymously give you.
Right.
A, and then they'll make sure that they, it'll cost that much.
Uh, talking about the dog park, so that's on the agenda too, I thought, just in case there was some, uh, some more discussion. Um, but I am working on several sites, uh, airport being one of them. This place, this spot right here on Prospect, um, and two spots, um, that people have said they could donate some land to. So we are working, we are moving forward on a few locations. Um, in case one drops off or three drop off, one of these should work. God willing. Oh, and Salt Shit Project, I go to the planning commission tomorrow to get that building permit. And that's what I have for you today.
Questions for the town manager?
No, this one.
I did not.
Old business, the dog park discussion?
Yep, so that's, that was, that, that little bit I had, I just, just in case there was Yep, so that's, that little, that little bit I had, I just, just in case there was more discussion, I thought. Yep. It might be for who else to have it there.
I mean, to recap, at the last meeting, we had the public hearing, we heard feedback from that, that meeting, it was loud and clear, Academy Street was a no, you know, it was kind of clear that the grade school was a no. And after that discussion, we had asked the town manager to look at some other locations. And I think that's where it's at now. Joe was looking at those, those other alternative, I mean, is there anything the board thinks is more promising than others?
No, I just have a couple comments.
Yep, go ahead.
That, and as we're looking at other locations, the new thought that I didn't bring up the last meeting, that I want to bring up at this one here, is I'm, I'm still leaning myself personally to say that as we're looking at land, I'm trying to figure out if it's that advantage, what the advantage of the town is of getting land that we can get some revenue from taxing, and having it taken off the tax rules while we have town land that we already have. The places, if I'm looking someplace other than the airport, I want to be looking town-owned land other than the airport. When I go looking at people, I know I heard the just, the recommendation at our last meeting about going and seeing if someone wanted to donate it. Thinking about it a bit, I'm saying, wait just a minute, we have a hard enough time, our revenues are going the wrong way anyway, why would I want land coming off the tax base for the town and make it tougher for us to meet our commitments? So I think the other one is.
I assumed they, I assumed they were going to like lease an acre for a dollar or for an amount, not come off the tax rule.
And if that's, we can see, I want to make sure that, I've heard some different, the other thing is, we, we, we are long past owing a decision, like I'm, I'm sitting here and I'll just tell you, I'm not that, I'm not so sure, I sat on a board February night that said, go with the dog park, put it at the airport. I'm sitting here today on a board, not so sure that this board still supports going to the airport, so I'm saying, because of everything, and how we seem to be working extremely hard to go anywhere but the airport. So that's just, me, and I'm hoping, my, my goal was at this meeting tonight, we'd at least come out, be able to make a decision, hey, this is where we want to go. If I was, I don't want to speak for you, Joe, but if I were you, I'd be feeling like I'm being sent in all kinds of directions all over the place, not getting a whole lot of direction from us as a board. And so, again.
I see on the, you know, Joe's sheet here, that he's still going with, he's still looking at the airport, the North End, but he's making arrangements for the wetlands delineation to be made. So we know, have exactly.
It'll be June before, I've heard before, we can get someone out here. I just, I just want to caution us, we heard loud and clear from more people I've seen at an informative meeting since I've been on the board, and we managed to upset just about 50% of the town. If we continue looking and talking about places like the Fairhaven outlet and everything else, we might be successful in upsetting 75 or 80% of the town. And I'm not looking to do that either, and that's just my caution.
As far as the dog park goes, I am all for it. Location still is an if, with the leased land thing, beautiful idea if we could pull it off, there's two places that we could possibly do that, that are A, will have a massive economic impact on the town, because it pulls people off the highway, and it will put our best paw forward. Which would be A, the first one would be across from the Heritage, it's right there at ease of access, everybody comes down, it's inside, everybody can walk to it, you have structures there in case you want to put cameras out for liability reasons, you just want to pull it down, you do it up the airport, you gotta run cable from where to where, and we all know how cheap cable is, so. And the other spot would be in between Shaw's and Max Market. That space is perfect. You get the truckers who use it, you get them coming off the highway, you get them slowing down from 70 to, you know, switch gears to 35, and now they're sitting in the dog park enjoying, you can put up your billboards, local only, bring them in, draw them in, over time you can slowly build out and bring them down into here. And that's the other, that's the other appeal. Less residential. But I don't know who owns or how that would.
Get how that works.
I can't tell you, but those are my two suggestions, where it doesn't cost a lot, and you could actually see use, because from my point of view, I love the airport, it's a great place, it's about a way, but it might be too far about a way, outside of mine, and plus when I get there, I've got a big wide open field that I want to run my dog around, or, you know, I got a dog park, no offense.
No, I get it.
But it, it's the appeal of big field, you're gonna lose the full potential of the dog park. It's kind of like having a speedboat in Lake Champlain versus Bonnington, where are you gonna go?
John?
That piece of land he's talking about across from the Heritage Family Credit Union is all about a concern of the residents of Lewis Lane.
That's not what I heard, I heard between Shaw's and Max.
That was the second idea.
That's really all by Mac Allen.
That's what I figured, well, no longer Mac.
Well, it's his business.
Those would be my suggestions.
Yeah, no, those are great.
I thought the land in front of Lewis Lane is an old cemetery.
No.
I've heard that several times.
Jake will agree when he put that up, father put that up, the people that own the homes on Lewis Lane own that piece of land on it.
Well, going back to what Glenn was saying, it has taken a huge amount of time, none of us intended for that to happen, or could even guess it would have happened. I kind of got the sense from the group that was here last time that they really would like us to pursue the airport, and if we're gonna pursue the airport, we, to me, we have no other choice but to wait for the wetlands person to come, because to keep choosing places and then have her say no is just chasing your tail.
Yes.
So I don't think, I don't think that we can, you know, as much as we want to, come up with a plan tonight. That's just how I feel about it.
Linda? No, hold on a second, hold on, Linda.
Okay, and my husband will kill me for even mentioning this. The runway, I understand the RC flyers, and I get it, because there's no place for them to fly, but looking at their roster, how many of them are Fairhaven residents? They donate, what, 750 a year for the use of it, I mean, you know, we could raise that like nothing, for the dog park, so why exactly, and we had to build up, we had to put up the fence because people were tearing up the runway, so the town put up a fence for them. I'm just wondering what hold or what, what in they have to the town that we're not looking at that property, other than the fact that if I go home and tell my husband I brought it up, he'll kill me, but.
Yeah, RC flyers, there is a field in Queensberry, and there is a field in Argyle, so there are other places.
I just can't imagine there, there are more than a couple people in that group, active flyers that live in Fairhaven. They're, you know, Holtney, they're Rutland, they're every place but Fairhaven, and yet that piece of property isn't, and I, I don't foresee them making that an airport again, an active airport, so. Just crossed my mind that, wonder why that didn't come in, because that is not wetland where the runway is.
John?
Twenty, Max and Gar put the armory up the airport, the area from where the guard is now, all the way past the high road that we're talking about, the dog park, was declared usable for that building, and it was not at that time delineated by the Army Corps of Engineers of Wetland. They could have put that armory anywhere else through there.
It seems to have changed, John. The rules seem to have changed.
Or at least the person who's doing the work is interpreting the rules.
Differently.
The Army Corps of Engineers has come along and straightened that way a couple months.
But the part in the middle where the runway is can't be wetland.
So, I mean, where do you guys want to go? Where's the board, I mean? Where are you guys at with the, continue on with wetlands delineation at the airport? Look at other areas, I mean, where, I know where Glenn's thinking is? Where are some of the others at?
I think there's plenty of room up there for everybody.
I think.
I would think we could find a spot for both things to go on simultaneously.
If that dog park was put between, I don't know.
I think the North End.
Before you get to the RC flyers, they got.
I think there may be a better spot, which is why we've been, keep looking, but I think the North End is totally doable.
All right, I know Rod has some hesitation about, you know, if we were gonna develop the area up there, not having, at least, at least by the area.
Right in the middle, North End is, is a viable solution. I mean, the suggestion, you know, Mac, Mac, Mac Business might make a magnus, they're not giving up the land, they're just allowing a certain use, a call to.
And if you sell it right, it's, it's money and it's pot.
Right.
You got people outside that car standing, the longer they're outside that car, that's more money that they can spend in that store, that's more money we can buy.
It's a possible, it's a good idea.
Their biggest enemy is the highway.
But, you know, one phone call to Mac, they'll either shoot it down or say, geez, that's a good idea. If it's a good idea, then that might be our way out, because that is a better location than the airport. The airport is out of the way.
Does Joe reach out, or does Murphy reach out?
Okay, all right. I think the mayor's passed out. I mean, for me, I would say I don't want to go into another area where there's concern about wetland, so that one down, down the flats by the bus shop, that would be off for me, because I don't want to get involved in another.
Just so we're going into it with our eyes open, I believe if you go to either of those places, we're gonna have the same issue we had on Academy with not in my front yard, not in my backyard. You're gonna have that same issue, only a different group of people sitting here asking us, what are we thinking of?
And I guess that's what I.
Just you understand.
There's really already a dog park right across from that, if you look at Wolf Pack, there's a lot of dogs there barking, more than they'll ever be at the dog park.
Completely contained, though.
No, I know, it's noisy, so that might, they might buy that better.
Maybe.
They might like it, too.
But that's, that is the North End.
It's not a residential area. It's a commercial area that.
There's a lot of noise, yeah.
No, I'm saying, they can't complain about the noise when the tractor trailers are.
You can't hear the dogs. But it also gives the truckers a safe place to walk their dogs, so their dogs aren't, you know, running around in truck stop.
So, back to the direction that we're giving, Joe. No, no, but I'm just saying, if I was sitting in your chair, I'm going, okay, so what are you, what are you telling me you want me to do?
Check the old town and dog park in college.
Put a fence around it, we're done. I can give, I can give SVL and the colleges to test the waters.
I think the truckers, a lot of truckers travel with their dogs.
It is, it's economic development.
Truckers, as well as just people driving.
Yeah.
Filling up for gas, they have the.
More and more people are traveling with their dogs.
Is Joe approaching this as a donation, or is?
Well, I was just gonna say, they're not sending any money, my answer's, no, absolutely we don't support spending a dime to get additional land, we have enough land.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not suggesting that they, we ask them for a donation of land, it's their land, but we have a 10-year lease or, you know, for a dollar, you know.
We just want to put up a dog park on their land.
Right, I guess I, I saw it the other way, I thought you were gonna entice them in some way, other than economic development. When I heard this, Glenn, that's what I heard.
But the economic development is the thing that really entices them.
They won't have to pay to get it more, rush on.
True, either way, I mean, then we just go back to the North End.
Yeah, I would say, if that, if that shuts down, I agree with what Jeff just said, go to the North End and end it.
I worry about when, like, if we were to choose a location that the town doesn't own, let's say you do a 10-year lease, 10 years from now, they could decide to sell that property or do something else on it, and then you have. Oh, no, we have this really popular dog park, but now where can it go? So trying to come up with a solution on land that the town already owns, and with the point of view that Glenn was talking about financially, to me, both of those aspects, I would lean towards, you know, town-owned land, but, you know, that's just my opinion. I choose.
I didn't, I didn't think that far through, but.
So I think if I'm reading. So if I'm reading the board correctly, we'll see if I'm right or wrong here, Joe, we'd want Joe to look at the SVL and property as a potential, but then if that's a no, focus on the North End of the airport and figure it out.
If they go to the North End, I mean, if you have people going in and out, a little dirt track isn't gonna do it.
I've got a solution for that. Hundred old, if the town owns.
We talked about that, John.
Yeah.
With a couple pull-offs, we could.
So does that sound, place some direction? I mean, you're not on the hunt anymore, you've got one narrow, you've got two private properties to continue with, and then if those fall through, you got the airport.
And then the young lady that's doing the delineation's not here till June, so we have time to make the inquiries. I mean, we know there's a postage stamp up there.
Right.
That is dry, so it's just a matter of flagging exactly where that is.
And the last, last time I spoke with her, I did give her direction, I told her, find me 214 by 80-foot rectangle, instead of us telling her saying, how about here, how about here? I said, go find me some space, and then that's.
I still have a lot of questions about the fact that there's drainage already up there, and I don't.
I would agree.
If she, I guess I'd kind of like to be at the meeting when she comes.
I'll let her know. I've told her already that you're only a few minutes away, and that you want it to be there.
Yeah, I can get there in a few minutes. But I, I know that there's French drains all the way down through that property, there's ditches, I mean, so in the, what, when did they, when did they do that, probably?
1956.
Yeah. So it's all pre all the wetland stuff in the 80s, so I, I think that should have some bearing, but maybe we didn't maintain those or something, but.
I don't know if it didn't work.
All right, any other thing from the dog park committee, I mean, do you guys need any?
No, we're fine, we know that the town will get it done.
Yeah, okay.
No, we appreciate.
Thank you.
And we've told people, back off the town, back off, you're all, they're working on it, you know, you don't need people.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Good, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your efforts, I mean, you've done well.
We're having fun, well, except for this part, we're having fun.
All right, cemetery deeds. Great, um, yes. Is there a motion for a cemetery deed? In your packet?
Go ahead there, Jeff.
Motion to approve the sale of Cemetery Lot 94S in Section 11 to Mark, Craig, Todd, and Rick Ferguson, and Carrie Atkins.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod, for the cemetery lot. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.
And I'd make a second motion to approve the sale of Cemetery Lot 94N in Section 11 to Todd Ferguson, is that all right?
To, to who?
Todd Ferguson.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second? Did we do it right?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, right here it is, Jeff on the first one. So there was a motion by Jeff, seconded by?
Rod.
Rod, okay. I didn't hear that one. Questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries.
Glenn, you missed this one. Yeah, get it on the way back, but.
Which one?
Glenn did.
Got you, all right. Gotcha, alright.
Chair.
Yeah, I think you missed the other.
This one?
This one there.
Ken?
Jeff, do you have a question?
I was just gonna.
You moving on?
Next one.
Okay, um, letter of support for cultural facilities grant.
Make a motion, we write a letter of support for the cultural facilities grant.
Second. Carol, it's gone.
Uh, motion by Jeff, seconded by Carol, to write the letter of support for the grant that the town is applying for. Okay, any questions on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Rod?
This for?
Joe, do you want to just go through the?
Sure, the, the facilities grant is another grant we're applying to, to get about $20,000 to refurbish the second floor.
Okay, so it's for this building?
For this building, yeah. And there's no, we're not asking for cash match from the town. The VCDP grant loses its federal designation, so we can use that money as match for the state, the state award.
And what are you looking to do with the, if, if we were lucky enough, what would you be willing to do with the saved money?
With the saved money?
Well, additional money.
Additional, so the, um.
Well, but it, I, I got the impression that it was kind of a.
I think he's getting more done.
Well, that's what I'm saying. What, what more?
Yeah, so what we need to do is get the cash to finish the bathrooms and finish the fire-rated corridors.
That's downstairs?
Uh, both this, this exit and then the exit at the police department.
And that's the corridors, and then the bathroom's down here?
Uh, bathroom's upstairs.
Bathroom's upstairs.
We're, we're almost there. The, uh.
Elevator.
If we're not there already, the contractors redoing their numbers will get us, they'll get us a solid number hopefully before the next meeting.
Hopefully, there's not a lot of pressure.
The letter, though, just says elevator and restroom.
Yes.
Right, okay.
We would use this money for the restroom, and then, as Rod said, saved money would go towards the corridors from the other grant awards.
Alright, so we have a motion. Any other questions? Roger, you're also out with that.
I'm also.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries. Job description approvals. Joe, do you want to go through the?
Oh, sure. And let me, I'm gonna pop them up on the big screen if, if the board doesn't mind, so that way we can all see it together.
Oh, I went right, I skipped this.
We'll go back to.
We did your job.
I skipped one.
We'll go back to the job descriptions.
Crossed it off.
I crossed it off, really.
I don't know if that's a good sign.
I don't know.
That's not a good sign?
No.
Okay, this is the water, starting with the water treatment facility assistant operator. Job description.
I think you've done this first and then jump him back to me.
Yeah.
Chris, mine did it.
I screwed up.
Not a lot of changes on this one. Um, what we want to do is start cross-training our staff between water and wastewater, uh, at least so those folks can do testing in each, each plant, as opposed to kind of siloing our labor. Um, second page, number nine and 10, were added to cross-train wastewater plant to bring backup for absence and weekend coverage, ability to perform testing and make additions when needed, uh, transfer backup certifications. Um, and then the obligatory perform other related duties as assigned. And then we added is desirable under education, training, and experience. And I would need, for the board, I would need a motion to approve each.
Each one?
Yeah, each one.
Hang on just a second. I bet it's already there, but where it says number two is desirable, is there a line in there that says over whatever amount of time that they would get those.
Yeah.
Certification.
Certifications or whatever.
Yeah, right there. Within two and a half years of.
Okay, and that's the same thing that you're talking about down lower that's in the yellow.
Oh, for backup cert?
No, number two.
Two, C2.
Just education, experience, and water treatment?
Yeah. Is desirable.
But they are getting experience at that point.
Continuing education or whatever.
Well, what the thought was, Carol, on that one was, when it was sitting there, the only reason we put is desirable at the other end of it is saying, there's a good chance the person who comes in interviews has none of the education, experience, and treatment-related field, and we didn't want that line to take a good candidate out because it was a requirement. That was the only reason we did that.
Other questions on this job description, this specific one? Are we wanting to approve, or do we need more? More time to review? What's your?
I'm good with that.
You're good?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
The board needs to approve this? Why?
They've always approved these.
Is that like an employee job description, or is that an ad to hire?
This is the job.
This is the actual job description that they would utilize and which we, the union looks at as well.
Yeah, I was just wondering from my standpoint, like, is desirable needed if it's in your job description? That's kind of, I mean, I can see that.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Putting that up to hire somebody would add is desirable, because then.
I guess it's a chicken/egg scenario.
It came first.
A lot of times we stick this in with the job ad, so they might say, why didn't I, it didn't say that I could, or whatever.
So to Rod, to your point, if, if the board doesn't want to see these, I can, I can edit these on my own. But if the board does want to see them, obviously, in past practice is what I've, what I'm trying to stick with.
And what really?
I'm, I'm interested in seeing them, but I, as far as I'm concerned, it's consensus of the board, hey, this looks good, good job.
See them and feedback, and Joe can do what he needs with them.
Yeah, I mean, Joe has hiring, firing capabilities on, therefore he's got this, but, you know.
The only thought was here was to, when he showed the work plan for people in the cross-training, just wanted to come back, and, and because we are hiring some people right now, it looks like.
Good time to do it.
Let's do the four that we're probably gonna be doing within the next year and give you a chance to look at.
With that said, the only one that I think the board has a responsibility have been put on is, is the accountant.
The accountant.
Now, I am not saying that we should not even talk about these other ones.
Yeah, no, I agree.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
Good.
I mean, seven heads are better than, you know, just one.
Sure.
But, you know, comments or.
So we're good with this one?
So we're comfortable with which one?
Yep. Assistant transfer station operator.
This is for the Rousba, is that position filled today?
No, that is a vacant position.
For how long?
Until we get a good candidate.
No. Okay. Who was in this before, I guess, and how?
That was Bud Bowlen's position, and he was, he was promoted to run the transfer station. He's now the transfer station operator.
Gotcha. Oh, which one are we looking at?
Assistant transfer station operator, Public Works Rousba.
Yep, there we go.
Right there.
Yeah, he got vaulted.
Yeah, yeah.
He moved out from here, looking to.
Just double checking. Got my head around it.
Okay, so for this one, this one had a few extra changes. Number three on duties, they don't handle cash anymore. I think we want to leave sales permits and punch cards in there, even though we do have that.
Okay.
Currently.
We're cross-training with the transfer station operator. This, this position is gonna be mostly with the DPW, um, but they should have, uh, they should be working sometime at the transfer station. Uh, number 10, this position used to sweep, mop, and vacuum the town offices. I don't know when that stopped, but it's, they haven't done that. I don't know how long.
Aaron was looking to take that out. He said, we don't have.
No.
Didn't want it in there, so.
Um, and then number three on the second page operates the transfer station, and I think that wording was just.
From the original.
Yeah.
I think it said ability to safely and effectively.
I see that there.
It was just worded it.
And then it also says, as Claire pointed out, municipal building custodian, it should probably be taken out too.
Yep, that's gotta, that should be.
Is, just back to number V10. Is that being pulled out because this specific job description wouldn't do those things, or? Okay.
He basically said, I would never send this person, I, between, if they are not working at the transfer station, they're helping, we're so far back in within the Rousba work and the DPW, that this person would be working somewhere else, might be helping most cemeteries.
At least the winter snow ice removal, I didn't think was a terrible thing.
Yep.
Yeah. Which one you looked at, winter snow and ice removal?
We want to keep the snow ice control. I think that's, if he doesn't have it in there, yeah, because this person would be sidewalks and we'd be able to shovel salt.
Yeah.
Even.
That's my job.
Yeah, but.
You do a great job, fine job you do.
Have you hurt your back?
Now, could this, could this person, I mean, does anyone clean, I mean, we're gonna have a brand-new sewer treatment plant. Who's gonna take care of that?
Uh, right now, the folks down at the treatment plant take care of it.
Okay, so it's in someone's job description?
I don't know if it's in their job description. I'll have to check.
Okay, so I would ask Aaron, who's gonna do it? You want a name, you want a job description?
Sure.
Right. I guess that's.
And if it's the Rousba, great, then put that in there.
If you're pulling it out, where did it go and who's in, who's in charge right now?
And then where are the behavioral?
Of everything.
Aspects?
Just.
Joe, within your job.
Think about it, where did it go?
Yep.
Or do we hire someone to do it? Right, we hire a service, right?
Okay, so I missed the hiring service for what, though?
They're wondering who does the sweeping, mopping, and cleaning.
We hire a service in town hall for that, which has been here for years. I don't know when that started.
Far to that Buddy Bowlen was the last one.
Yeah.
When they decided to go out and advertise the contract, and that's how we ended up with the cleaning service that we have now.
How many years ago? Do you know?
It's gotta be probably eight years.
It was.
So it's, they, they weren't doing the job.
Yeah. Carol, go ahead.
Uh, I just wondered, is there a document that has all the behavioral expectations for each position?
Um, not.
So like, um, well, um, like a behavioral standard around working with the public, not smoking, breaks, that sort of thing. Do you have anything like that?
The union contract does address the, the things you just mentioned, but we also have our own personnel policy that was just updated two years ago, maybe, um, which also addresses those things.
Okay.
The other thing I was thinking about.
Did that with you?
You guys did it together?
Yeah, we did.
Just checking if Glenn remembered.
Question, sometimes in a job description, you'll see like physical abilities, like you, this job, you must be able to lift 50 pounds, do this, which supports you when there's workman claims and stuff like that. You know, being able to come back to, to work, can you physically do the job, things like that. Do we have any of that in our job descriptions in general? Not, not picking on this one in general, but.
Some of them do say you have to lift, be able to lift, or work outside or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, those, those are all important things.
Right.
So, but we can definitely add that in, and like Rod said, be more consistent with our, must be able to lift 15 pounds and, or 20 pounds, whatever it is.
Because all they do is refer to physical labor, they don't spell it out.
Sure.
Good point.
Okay, any other questions on this position? Alright, next one up.
So is the board comfortable with me making the changes and then adding like the pound, like 50 pounds lift and work outside and inclement weather kind of thing?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
If, the thing is, if you pull 10 out, isn't it all covered under the 20, under the 13 hours that they work at the Public Works?
Yeah.
Like, if you're working at Public Works, you're doing some of these things.
Uh, like sidewalk and.
Yeah.
Snow removal.
It's up to Aaron to point where you're going for those 13 hours, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Management thing.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't, so I need to all be spelled out.
Well, I mean, I, I agree with that for the outside work stuff, but I, I guess I have an issue if someday we determine that we have to hire an outside firm to clean the sewer treatment plant, or the water treatment plant. Okay, they should take care of their, their own places of work. Same thing, trucks are to me a place of work. I've always wanted to see somebody be responsible to make sure the trucks were cleaned. I mean, if you drive a truck, you, you don't just, okay, I'm done my shift and I'm, I'm leaving.
Sure.
Because no one cleans the trucks then. That's how the floorboards brought it out on those 550s. Okay, I mean, we're spending a lot of money on equipment. Who's taking care of it? I, I don't know where it fits in, but you have to have that conversation with Aaron, who is responsible?
Sure.
I think every driver is responsible.
I would agree.
Not just one, but everyone.
If you drive it, you clean it. That seems very reasonable.
It's your workplace, your workspace. Okay, and ultimately, Aaron is responsible to make sure that that's getting done.
Get some leverage.
Which one you got now, Joe? Oh, how about, let's do office assistant.
Yeah. We'll do the salary position last.
Yeah. Um, so this one here, we were looking to make a few more changes as well.
This is the office assistant account receivable. It's the Bev job.
Yeah, this is the Bev job. Uh, confidential, because this, um, this position is back up for the accountant clerk position. We wanted to spell that out a little bit more clearly, and confidential, you'll see in the top paragraph, that was added because our account clerk does deal with human resources issues, and she maintains those files. So if our backup is not able to be confidential with, with our stuff, if something, God forbid, bad happens, it's not really worth having. So that was dropped in there. Um, and then some semantics, reports directly to the manager. This is a, I think we wanted to change this, remind me. This is a non-exempt salaried.
Right, well, I put salaried in there. You probably won't. You know how we talked about it, we wanted to be a salaried position, it didn't have enough in it? And somewhere we're trying to see if we were putting things like the confidentiality, you'll see in the other one, some human resource piece.
Well, Bev even deals with confidential, of, of certain confidential nature. The, the thing that it would make her non-union would be if she has personnel, access to the personnel files. If, if she does, which I don't think Bev does, but if, if you're looking to change that, then that's a talking point with the union, but I.
Is it access to the files or is it oversight?
I think that.
He's spoken at a backup position.
When you say we're on the cross-training, please, we wanted, we wanted the ability, if the accountant was out for the next six months,
Yeah.
that they could go right in and do the complete job.
But doesn't the department?
Oversight, yeah.
The Department of Labor, I mean, defines all of these exempt versus non-exempt.
The Fair Labor Exchange should spell it right out.
Spell it right out, so if you have.
Whether it's non-exempt or exempt.
If you have those keywords in that description, you could work on.
Well, I mean, do you, I mean, okay, exempt versus non-exempt is, it doesn't have to be salaried to be.
Correct.
Not in the union.
Right.
It can be, uh, you know, an hourly person, but.
One of the things that jumps out to me on the office assistant, looking at that against the accountant clerk, and I would, I would hope we could take it out, is that the accountant works eight to four, Monday through Friday, period. That doesn't leave much. That doesn't leave much leeway if you need something more, whereas the office assistant doesn't have the hours in it, which is the way it should be if it's a salary position. And do they, I mean, in eight to four, that's a seven and a half hour day? They get paid that way or? Or an eight hour? I just don't think it should have the hours there, it's a salary position, it could require more or less.
Sure.
Because that's not what Jen does now.
No, it's not, she's, yeah, she starts a little earlier.
She shifts around.
You're talking about Jen, oh, yeah.
Yeah, but it should be similar to the other one if, if that one goes to a salaried position.
I would agree, I mean, it shouldn't define the work in the job description.
It shouldn't, in the job.
No.
That should be up to the manager.
They can't choose to work twelve to, twelve at midnight, you know, just because it's convenient for them, they have to be here for the public.
Yeah.
So it is just a salary.
Hour set by Tom Mendez.
I mean, that's, that's what it is.
Supervisor. But even then, you know, Jen, you know, sometimes in a snowstorm or something like that, I don't know, maybe she does, but she has got to get something done because of a meeting the next day, she comes in and takes care of it when there's no snow on the road.
Is this Jenny Fisher?
Not, no, not the one.
This one here is Bev's position that.
We're flip flopping a little bit.
That I think what we had at one time last year, late, late in the year, we talked that if, when, when Bev retires, would we want to look at that position? And would we want to modify the description a little bit and turn it into a salary position?
Yeah, we talked about that, but I'm, I'm not sure.
We didn't decide to and we were just, and we were just saying, ah, throw something up and let's get everyone to give some input in.
So how, how are we feeling about this last sentence here?
Well, I don't know how you can say that definitively if you don't have.
Yeah.
Blessing. I, I think to take that step, you've got to have the conversation after Bev leaves.
So I, I'm feeling like.
Oh, yeah, and probably with the, when we negotiate the next contract about the reason.
Only if she's leaving at the same time.
We're taking.
It'd be in the dead though.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm feeling like we should take the salary, sal, the word salaried out, is that where I'm at?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, salaried is, if it's a union position, it's never going to be salaried.
What was the, I guess, what was the benefit?
Of to make it salaried?
I think it was put in there.
We talked that we could do, remember we ran into the problem of giving an increase, a performance increase that, and then we went.
Didn't follow the contract.
Right, and didn't follow the, and then we were trying to cover, we were saying, hey, how do we, if you're going to, if, if you're going to treat it like a salaried position.
Yeah.
You, you need to have a discussion if you're, and if you're not, that's okay too, you don't need to have that discussion, but.
Well, I'll take it out for now because that's not how it is, and then when it's vacant, we can look at adding it.
And in two months, we'll be back here again.
Yay.
Joe, just, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Just hit that leaf that fast. Okay.
I think that's a bigger.
It's a discussion with multiple parties.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we don't have, we don't have all the parties to get there.
Right.
Okay. So number ten, cross training was added in there for the account clerk, again, just to clarify that we're all covering down. Oh, and this, we're going to take this out, this should come out, for some reason there's reference to the, to the union, union hiring practices.
Under selection guidelines, which doesn't appear on any of the other descriptions, and we're saying, it just muddies the water, just lose it and.
Yeah, the whole deal?
We, right.
Go away. Okay, other questions on the office assistant?
I think it's fluid at this point.
It's, yep. Uh, moving over to the accountant clerk.
No, thank you.
This one, although it's not in there, we want to add, if I can get it.
See, I couldn't get it too.
So long either.
We wanted, we wanted to add accountant clerk slash human resources because it's included in the, that they do human resource stuff in there. The problem, this document wouldn't let you type in there, so we have a little.
I'll figure out the technical difficulties later. Yeah. So, but yeah, we wanted to add HR in there just because that's what the job is actually doing. Um, this particular line here, the contract may be negotiated on a yearly basis, we wanted to remove that. At least since I've been here, that has not been renegotiated.
So then you also have to take out just above that, contract salary. It's good that you have to take out contract before the salary.
This piece here?
Yep.
It is a salaried position?
It's a salaried, yeah, position, yeah.
And the hours.
And then you're going to change the hours, yeah.
Now, I'm going to take this out.
I mean, you can, you can mention that the, that the office hours are, and there's got to be loose, loosely around that, but that's, I think that's between you and that person, how that's going to be.
Is accountant clerk the right title? I hear accountant and I think CPA, and that's not required.
No.
No, all accountants aren't CPAs though.
I know, I, I don't know what the answer to that is, to me, that's not how I would think of it.
And it was, when I looked at it, I saw the accountant clerk and I'm going, what threw me off was for a salary position, they're a clerk, it's our accountant. Well, they're a CPA, but they're, they're our accountant.
Yeah.
And I'd lose the word clerk, which makes it seem like, okay, so what is that exactly?
You want to take off?
I know, I'm just throwing it, throwing it off.
I don't know, you can think about it, but to me, it's an awkward title.
Yeah, accountant clerk is awkward, yes.
Yeah.
All right. What are other towns called, the financial?
Keepers.
Yeah, bookkeeper, financial manager.
Financial manager, there's, there's a.
Financial officer. There might be a better term for the.
And if it is, we'll just change the wording further, you know?
Yeah, because accountant also doesn't portray any, any work in the personnel matters and stuff like that.
Yeah, we need to add HR.
Well, if you're going to try to fill out a job, is if you hire an accountant, can they do the other part?
Right, right, yeah. And, and they, they got, they're going to see this as part of the process of hiring.
Right, because.
You want them to see that they're going to be personnel.
Yeah, and we'll get where we can fix the document to go.
Is it an office manager? Is it an office manager if it crosses both HR and?
When I, when I hear the word office manager, I, I think of the, the office managers, the administrative secretary for the, and I'm going, I don't know if it's.
I don't know, I don't want to get hung up on that.
No, I just look at some other towns and see what, see what the.
We'll change that up.
The jobs are similar, there just.
VLCT has their categories, I can just grab that and see what it looks like. Uh, okay, office assistant, so work closely with.
Cross training.
Their cross training was added. Uh, serves as human resources assistant as it pertains to interacting with existing employees. Is it the assistant?
I don't know what that means.
That's just the wording that was in the original one, serves as a human resources assistant as pertaining to interacting. I mean, it, it means you're the ones who do the I-nines, who do the, probably, that kind of stuff.
I think it's assistant to you basically, right?
That's after, yeah, after reflecting on.
The staff, yeah.
Because at the end of the day, I think it boils down to.
Someone mentioned the maintain, I think Rod mentioned they maintain personnel records, that's the, that's the biggie there, yeah.
And assist with collecting taxes, sewer fees, which is all part of the cross training with the Bev job.
Yes.
Yeah, and that is the deal.
Now, I didn't see it, it didn't jump out at me. But the, the timesheets and paychecks and all that kind of stuff, that's human, that's personnel, human resources related, I just didn't see it in there.
Check rates, central accounting duties.
Prepares entries.
It's all.
Responsible for payment of salaries.
Accounts payable and accounts receivable, which is important.
Yeah.
But all of your personnel stuff.
That's right there.
Where's apparel?
Where's, yeah, right there.
Reviews and invoices, purchase orders, all the parts to ensure accountability.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
It didn't jump out at me, but probably because I was looking for the highlight. Well, thank you.
That is a big credit, John.
You have the selection guidelines too on this one?
Yeah.
There was, I don't know if that.
Talking about the requirement, the job requirement.
That last thing.
Losing the selection guidelines from the bottom.
Oh, yes. I mean, you should be able to interview however you want to set up interviews and stuff.
Yeah, that's a weird thing to have in there.
Right.
Bam.
Cool.
Now, um, there's, there's one section, work with the town clerk treasurer to determine transfer of investment monies.
What was that?
That's.
Off of the second.
Second bullet.
I get on the wrong thing.
Okay, I don't, I don't know that, I mean, the treasurer defines where they're going to do the investments.
Yeah.
The, I mean, that, that's all town clerk treasurer, well, I'm sorry, treasurer responsibilities.
Town manager treasurer?
No. In our case, the town clerk is the treasurer, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, they're elected as the treasurer.
Those are both elected positions.
Treasurer has.
They don't, see, they, the town, accountant does not determine anything in this, they assist.
Uh, I see. Works with the kind of to assist in the transfer.
You know, this is firmly in the town treasurer, Valleywick.
Assist transfer of investment monies.
Assist the town clerk.
Yeah.
Work with town clerk treasurer. Okay, let me wordsmith it.
Yeah. Yeah, you just, just work on that, but they don't, the accountant does not determine, that's the treasurer position. And then I, you know, there's going to be times that the, uh, this position, whatever we call it, will be asked to provide input to the board directly. Okay, I, I think that's, the person's got to be aware of that.
Right, during budget especially, yeah.
Yeah, budget reports, you know, if.
Personnel issues that make it to the board that are, you know, go above the town manager or the town managers, things like that.
I don't want to suggest, you know, backstabbing or some, I think this person, this position is one of the hardest in town because they are the oversight people, oversight person, the checks and balances on all the financial records, okay? This is how, this is how towns get into trouble because this position is held in, in those towns, is held to the responsibility and, and, uh, loyalties are to an individual. This person should be loyal to the town first and foremost, but they're working for the town manager. Okay, I just think that there should be something in here that says they may have to provide input directly to the town, to the select board. Hey, and I'm not throwing stones at Joe, we don't know who, you know, Joe may go work someplace else in a year. I'm not saying you should, I'm just saying.
I mean, things happen.
Things happen, okay, and we get another person in there and there's a, a learning curve, you know, we, you'd like to hire the absolute right person each time, but that doesn't always happen. I think personally, they've got to have a responsibility to the board, directly to the board, if asked, not on a day to day basis. But if asked.
Under, in another bullet, under requirements of the job, another bullet that would say.
Yeah, I was just going to say, provide.
Communication and interaction with the.
Yeah, right at the end.
As requested.
Yeah, if, you know, if requested, as requested.
So in the, in this, I have to tell you, this makes me uncomfortable.
I knew it would, I was trying to be.
Yeah, I mean, no, not just, which is maybe a conversation for later, but dropping it in like that is an automatic backdoor. That's an automatic, in my job description, I didn't like what he did, I'm going to go tell Joe.
But wait a minute, what if you're doing something that is?
Wrong.
Wrong.
Which, I mean, it's everybody's responsibility to, if there's something wrong, that's just your, your basic responsibility to say something.
I know that, but this person.
But to put it in here and say, well, I'm going to go tell the board if you, whatever.
Well, and, and that's the job of the board to say, wait a minute, you know, come on, give me a break. Uh, but, uh, this is one of the hardest positions because they've got to be the corrector. Uh, and I'm going to pick on Bill for a second, if Bill does something wrong, this person goes to you and says, Bill's doing something wrong. Okay, and, and, but if you are doing something wrong, that person's got to have the availability to come to the board and say, this is wrong.
I, I think they would anyway though. Don't we have a chain of command policy? Yeah, it's if, if the manager's, anybody though, that's just whistleblower stuff, like I saw Joe steal fifty bucks out of the thing.
I'm not talking about things egregious, as egregious as that.
I, what we're.
That's different, and I agree.
What this leads to, in my opinion, and I have a little, a little experience, um, this leads to the accountant being managed by the board, now the accountant's managing the town manager. I don't like that, I'm going to tell the board, I don't like that, I'm going to tell the board, I don't like that, I'm going to tell the board, so that way the manager is no longer responsible, he has no authority over that position.
But could we, because I, I'm still saying that if you had a bullet that says, under the requirements of the job, where we're saying they need to know computer and everything else here, and we go, the required to communicate and interact with the select board as required, doesn't tell me that that's a license to go around my boss. That says that you're going to be, that you're going to be asked during budget times to be, to be an additional expert to help reinforce what you're telling us, Joe, I don't look at it as, I don't look at it as questioning you, I look at it as just.
Well, not just me.
I was going to suggest, it had nothing to do with dotted line to the board or anything like that.
Sure.
It's just that they have to be aware that they can come directly to the board for whatever.
So under nature and scope, it says, an employee may have to work on an occasional evening if requested to attend select board and other financial meetings.
It's in there.
It's, I mean, it, yeah, and, and in terms of malfeasance, everybody is responsible for reporting malfeasance, it's just whistleblower stuff. That's why I didn't know if we had a, a chain of command policy that defines that stuff, board role, all that. I can't remember. What do you, what did we develop with all the staff on it?
Um, that was just a staffing grid, I think.
We did, we had a conflict of interest policy, uh, this sounds more like a compliance, more of a thing that you would say that if you thought a peer was doing something, not just your manager, but it can be in any direction.
Oh, yeah.
If they, if you thought someone in any direction was doing something inappropriately, what's your reporting process? And that's, I don't know, might be worth looking to see if we, if we have one of those.
True.
Okay, point, did we give you enough feedback?
You did, that was great, and if the board is interested in seeing these, I'm, you know, I, you know, we're a team, and like, like Rod said, seven's better than one. Um, if you guys don't want to see something, please let me know, I won't bother to bring it, just, you know.
No, I, I think this was positive, I just don't, I was just saying, I don't think there has to be a, a.
A vote.
A vote.
Yep.
Which is fine. Cool. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Joe. Water sewer budget, oh, sorry, parade.
The fact stabilization.
Oh, I keep skipping that, sorry. Fact stabilization.
And is it really sorry, that's the question.
Huh?
I know you guys have been working on it hard, so.
Stabilization bringing this guy up.
Well, we, we just want to get an idea before we go too far down the road, if we're, if you'd like to see something different, we're going. What you're gonna see, and, and yours isn't in color, so I asked him to put, I asked Joe to put it up here, because it's easier for me to point out. What's in black is what the policy is that you have today for tax stabilization. What's, what's in red are words that we changed, and what's lying through, when we struck out some things, you'll see a line go through what we wanted to delete. And, so it's a lot easier to, to. Basically, what we were talking about is coming up with a tax stabilization policy that, that would be more incentivize people to go and, and, uh, fix their businesses, for residential people to go and build the addition on the house. Uh, so, so it's, it's two elements here. Not wanting to take a lot, a lot of time, but just, just to give the general idea, we went in and looked and we benchmarked all kinds of towns and what they did for tax stabilization. The approach of even including residential with commercial and industrial, there's two or three other towns that do it. Uh, Rutland has a form of it, I think Brandon does a residential tax stabilization in, in theirs. They all have different ways. What we found with the ones that did it, they usually had a pretty complex thing, okay, had to be so many jobs, so much money. We decided we wanted to also make the process easily understood simple. Like when we said, commercial, industrial, instead of going for the eight years, do it for five years, and instead of doing increments of a certain seventeen percent, ten percent, twenty percent, or whatever, to just say fifty percent, five years. Uh, we put in the, it had to be an improvement of ten percent in the grand least value, ten percent or more, in order to be, to be eligible with another key piece of that.
Can I, can I give you example of a, a possible scenario, and you tell me what the numbers are?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm gonna stay with residential, it, it applies to commercial, industrial as well, but
Mm-hmm.
A hundred thousand dollar house.
Yep.
So, what triggers this is a ten thousand dollar addition. Or call it eleven thousand, because they went over the ten percent.
Going to the next page.
Okay? So, what you're suggesting is they're going to get assessed on fifty-five thousand dollars. That's fifty percent.
That's correct. Now, in the simplest, in the simplest terms, when you're thinking most, again, what we're looking at, thinking in terms of residential, someone wants to put a two-car garage, average two-car garage today, probably.
Be careful.
I read that differently, yeah.
Okay.
I read it as fifty percent of the new assessed.
The new value.
The new assessed value, yes.
The newest test value.
Of the difference.
Yeah, that's not what that says.
But I read through it.
That's, that's correct, no, let me, let me come back, maybe I missed something. You've got your hundred thousand dollar home, and you wanna do a ten thousand dollar improvement.
Yeah, whatever.
The improvement is ten thousand dollars. And what we're talking about is the fifty percent stabilization is on just the.
Ten thousand. See, that's not, I said fifty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's half of the total.
Oh, no, that's okay, so I, I just wanna make sure.
That's a good deal, though.
It's a great deal.
That's what I'm talking, that's what I'm talking, the person with, I have a hundred thousand dollar home, and I did a twenty-five thousand dollar
Right.
garage.
Right.
You get half of the.
I get half of it. For.
You get half of the twenty-five thousand off.
Half of the twenty-five thousand, because when people were saying, what, we're losing tax, no, you didn't lose a thing, you never had it.
You didn't have it.
You didn't have it to lose in the first place. But if that's what someone would need to feel comfortable about, about doing it, why, why not? The other one, we, we went a step further to, when you look back at some of the pieces of saying, okay, if someone filled out a request for tax stabilization, we even have the application we're working on, which has been boiled down to two pages. And wanna have it all in one packet, we talked about in terms of how would you get this to people, and how would they know about it? We're saying, anytime you build anything, you need to come for a permit. What you'd have is, it would be the tax stabilization policy, along with the application, would be sitting there, and when they come and look for a permit, I'd, I'd be looking to make sure they had that paperwork to say, you don't have to apply, but if you want to, this is available for you. Did, I know, Joe, you're gonna have the listers take a peek at it, did they?
They looked, I don't have feedback yet.
Okay.
I would say the new portion of the assessed value.
Yeah, I think that just needs to be defined.
Okay, so we don't change the wording?
Yeah, we're gonna change it. Because that's how I, the new assessed value is, in my example, a hundred and ten.
A hundred and ten, not ten thousand.
And it's, no, and I was hoping that you'd say, no, 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 it's just the, the new portion.
It's just the new portion.
Value gained, or something.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Now, I'm on board with that.
Where, where's everybody on the percentages?
I was gonna say, there's nothing magical about, we threw them in there to say, if, for example, someone, because the great thing is, we started low, with ten percent, and let's say, this was such a great deal, everybody wanted, was getting tax stabilization. And we were starting to grow at a rate that it might cause a, some pain on us, infrastructure-wise, supply. Well, you have two levers, you could take that ten, that ten percent and move it to twenty-five percent. You could take the fifty percent stabilization as another lever that you could go, if you wanted to control the speed of which we were doing it. Our, our history showed us that we had, it looked like, when I did a little history on tax stabilization, we had a policy that I think got used a couple of times, one was from when the Fairhaven Inn burnt down. But, and then, uh, and it's been used twice, I saw tax stabilization that was actually used quite a while ago. It got revamped and came out, I couldn't find a case where tax stabilization was given, and I'm saying, okay, could've been one of many things, people, we didn't communicate it well, it didn't, uh, or, it, a lot of reasons why it wouldn't, may not have worked, I don't wanna make any assumptions here. But looking at this, the goal, when we started looking at it, was, was to say, what would take and would entice people to fix up their property? To put that extra, if, with people working from their homes, if they wanted to build, uh, an extra room to have their home office and, and work there, what, what, what could we do to?
Okay. Another question. Don't wanna cut you off, but ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay. I see the sunset clause is years.
Yep.
Okay, in residential, it's three, in commercial, industrial, it's five. What if they do a tax stabilization and the next year, they sell it? Is the tax stabilization still continued?
Is it with the property, or is it with the owner?
With the owner.
With the, I, I.
So it's done.
I, your, what you're talking about are great for some, we need to put some, sounds like frequently asked questions for, if this, what, uh, this would help this. But my, our thought was, no, it's, because we talked about, there's, there's another element, there's the, there's the policy, the application, and there's the agreement. I like to think when we put that agreement together, we spell out in the agreement.
That, that's to you, the individual.
That it's just that individual, that if someone else bought it, they would have to apply for tax stabilization.
But they wouldn't get.
They wouldn't get any retroactive.
Okay.
Which I could see that with residential, but I'm not sure with commercial, with necessarily how frequently some properties might transfer.
So.
You know what I mean?
Well, I mean, there are, for instance, the, the folks on, the solar.
Yeah.
They're in it just, there's a lot of companies out there, developers, who, they, they, they wanna find a niche, and they build it. I'm not saying it happens all the time in Fairhaven.
No, definitely, definitely.
You know, when you come up against it, in a commercial environment, it could be big money.
Well, that's what I mean.
Hundreds of thousands.
And it's five years.
Correct.
Okay, they, they turn around, they sell the property for, you know, twice what they bought it for, and the, the improvements.
Yeah.
And, uh, the town is sitting there saying, what just happened?
Correct, yeah.
And, in the agreement, because I, I'd be looking that when we, if we, if, if you like the direction, we come back and you'd look at the each, in the agreement, we'd say, if you wanted something to say, if you didn't live to the agreement, which says the tax stabilization for three years, you owe the, I don't think you wanna, I don't, I don't know if you wanna, again, we weren't looking at losing as much as saying, we want something that will stimulate
Grow.
the growth and.
I, I understand what you're trying to do, but, um, you know, there are, it's, it's, these are big numbers, if we stick with, stuck with those numbers, those are big incentives.
Oh, very, very, very nice.
And could very easily be misused. You know, as, as an advantage. Uh, I mean, if, if they're in arrears, if they have a contract, if they're in arrears for more than a month, does the contract still stand?
We, good questions, I mean, we've been, I, I know under the agreement, we, we put in the things, the standard language, you can't be, owe the town any money for back taxes, water, sewer, do you even be eligible?
Right.
So that we, you wouldn't start with something in the arrears, you would.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, yeah.
But it's a good question of what, what happens if they get that way after, you were gonna try to ask a question, and.
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry to interject, um, these are great conversations we're having today. I don't, to, to hold the tax stabilization to the person, or company as it may be, whatever it is, um, I don't, I don't see what the, what the harm would be to keep, hold it to the property. If we were saying to a developer, you get to come in and you get a, you get a tax deduction.
I think the problem is, the assessed value may change at the sale.
At the sale.
Right, the assessed value is now the sale price, the sale value.
It, but, well, unless we're, unless you hold it at the fifty percent.
No, not state law.
Right.
State law, the listers, you sell a property, triple the price you bought it for.
But we're only looking at the initial increase in property value as the.
I understand that, but they sell the property, they, they make improvements.
Yeah.
And they're the right improvements, and they triple.
Yeah.
Right.
And they triple the sale. Now, the listers use the sale price as the new listing, as a new appraisal.
No, so, because then, okay, but still give them their five dollars off from the.
For the next couple of years, and then it's money.
Yeah.
It seems like.
It's an investment for the. Yeah, it seems like it's an incentive for somebody to come in and do the work, then they can use that as a sale, to sell the property, look, I just built six hundred thousand, and by the way, I'm gonna sell it.
And move on to another.
But the state, the state gets, you know, when you sell, buy a property, when you flip a property, the state gets huge
Yeah.
tax rate, the tax.
And that's what I was thinking, with somebody flipping properties.
Town gets nothing for it. Okay?
Well, well. But the town gets a, a clean refurbished house.
Uh, well, I'm kind of leaning towards industrial, commercial on this. I, I, I agree.
And hopefully, a nice industry.
The residential's aren't the same.
Well, the, and the other question, great stuff, we talked, because the other thing we talked about, saying, if we wanted to encourage someone to come in and build a new home. And we were talking, just, okay, you started with just a piece of land, and someone said, okay, I'm gonna put a
I thought.
Two hundred thousand, I'm gonna put a two hundred thousand dollar home there.
Yeah, I thought it applied, I thought.
And it does, I would say, our, our, absolutely, uh, I, I wanna encourage people to build new homes.
Right, I thought that, and then.
Well, same thing, you could say the same thing for commercial, industrial.
Right.
You got a, a, a commercial lot, go ahead.
Go, go ahead.
Be great for three years or ten years.
Um, you know, I don't know what the answers are, I'm just asking questions, have you thought about this, and have you thought about that? Uh, because they're open-ended.
Because to me, it's, it's that long game.
Yeah.
Now you've built your, your tax base, and that's there.
I think initial review, it looks, looks good.
Keep, keep.
Keep going with it, I think, I think so.
Not, not that we have a big problem with this in Fairhaven, Vermont, but do we wanna have any, uh, what do they call it, uh, well, if, if it's a, a US company
Oh.
versus if you, uh, if you sell to.
It can't be foreign-owned.
Foreign-owned, yeah, foreign ownership, uh, issues.
Does it matter from our perspective?
This is, this is a concept, this is a, uh, you know, some people invest their money only in US-based companies. It is a personal choice, do we want to have that personal choice? Is it important to us to have American-owned in Fairhaven? Or do we wanna support?
Good question, you tried it down, the same.
And again, this is really commercial, industrial.
Right.
Yes, I mean, if only I wanted to put in a plant, would anybody say no, because it's not US-owned? Yeah, it's not US. We're gonna, we're gonna.
I would.
Really?
I have that, I have a social.
You'd say no to the stabilization? Or would you say no to the company?
Well, no, it's stabilization.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Welcome on, but not.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we, we as a country tend to give incentives for international, uh, ownership. And, you know, through regulation, we slap the hands of the American-owned. And, and we're gonna give them another, and this is just my personal view. So, do we wanna have that social, or that, yeah, the social, economic conscience?
That's a good question, that we, there was one other one I wanted to run by you, is when I noticed that in order to do tax stabilization, by statute, the town had to vote March one of nineteen ninety-four, and they voted in commercial and industrial, they didn't vote in, uh,
Residential.
residential. And that being the case, when we work and finish this all up, I think, wouldn't, wouldn't we wanna go to a march and have, the voters would have to say, I, I don't know how comfortable I'd be if using the March first nineteen ninety-four vote, because it's a pretty significant difference between
Yeah.
residential and, and commercial, industrial.
Does it have to have approval of the voters?
Well, according to twenty-four VSA section two, twenty-seven forty-one, uh.
Oh, by statute.
By statute, the town had, when, when they did the first tax stabilization, they had to go get the voters of this town
So.
to say, yes, you can do tax stabilization.
See if it's still a valid statute.
If it's still, okay, if it's statute, because that was the only thing when I looked at after preparing, I said.
Well, if it's statute, we have to follow.
Okay. Any other? You'll get plenty of opportunity, uh, as we come back, like I said, we want the listers to weigh in to say, is there something we can make it easier, are we way out, are we making your job difficult by doing this, we, we want them to weigh in.
Can the software handle it?
Hearing, public hearings, I think this should go.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Broader.
Oh, yeah, once, once we get.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The detail.
Yeah. Okay, that's great.
All right, other questions? All right, thanks, Glenn. Joe, you had an update on the parade, or you were looking for a direction on?
Um.
Parade?
Looking for, I guess, approval. Um, the calendar's not, I think it's September eighteenth and September twenty-fifth, I talked to the school today. Um, eighteenth is the day for the Apple Fest, the twenty-fifth would be the backup rain day. The parade committee met and had talked about having the parade on Apple Fest day.
Yeah.
So we just, we need the board's, uh, approval to do it on that day.
Saturday, the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth?
Yes. On those, yeah, on those days. And if the board agrees, then we can start planning and moving forward.
All right. Is there a motion for that?
I'm on the committee, so I'd rather not make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve to have the, what are we calling it?
Oh, yeah, so that, we had a, we had a great discussion, it was like, uh, the theme was heroes.
Heroes.
So, to incorporate, yeah.
All of the.
Either on September eighteenth or the twenty-fifth, whatever the decision is by the committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Carol, seconded by Rod, to approve the parade for September eighteenth or twenty-fifth. Motion by Carol, seconded by Rod to approve the parade for September 18th or 25th. Any other discussion? Anything you want to add, Lynn, from the committee?
No, that was, okay, that was a good.
Did you have any discussion about a citizen of the year at that parade?
We.
I keep knocking on that door. I'm not going to drop it.
We talked about, we talked about speakers, but we didn't talk, and we have another meeting Monday, so we'll need to make a note to bring that up.
And maybe the, maybe the committee could.
Element again?
Parade.
No, it's a parade committee.
Parade committee.
Parade committee.
They could come up with a criteria of what it is to be a citizen of the year, and then it could be an annual sort of recognition.
Yeah.
And they get to ride in a fancy car in front of the parade.
By a truck.
Because I can think of several right now that would be good, good candidates.
Good. All right, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ride on just the trailer.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not that kind of thing.
Citizen of the year trailer.
Yeah.
All right, water sewer budget, first look.
Yeah. So these, these first looks, I typically don't ask the board to make any, any decisions. Just, I know you have to kind of dig in and review. Just some highlights on this, on this budget. Our guiding principles when we, when we did these budgets was to cut it as close to zero increase as possible. COVID has been tough on folks and we've noticed that in late payments. People aren't paying, but they do come in a little late. And the second guiding principle was to make sure our staff was well-trained and continue the apprenticeship program, which we've, we've got a lot of positive feedback from. With that said, we did come in, we saw an increased revenue. Over the last three years, we took the average under miscellaneous revenues. Your water rate, as it sits now, is down four cents on the user rate. And on the sewer rate, that did go up six pennies. And the increase in the sewer budget was a little over $3,000. And again, I'm not really looking for any kind of decision.
That's what the first.
First look is? Questions, just at the first glance?
No, the first look, and look, they said, I, my initial reaction was the sewer cost seemed lower than I expected it to be. Now, maybe I'm just anticipating the, the upgrade and, and the bills come through, but it.
It hasn't hit yet.
It hasn't hit yet, yeah.
No, that's in there.
It's, it was, it was sitting in there. It was, it seemed like it was a little.
He's saying it is in there.
Your bond payment is in that budget.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, but that's, yeah. Oh, yeah, but, okay.
Which part of the bond? The whole thing or is it still split between general fund and?
It's 76, yeah, half of it, 76,000.
I saw that in there, I just didn't see the other piece.
And I think we pulled some out of capital reserve. The allocation to refund capital reserve went down significantly.
That went down 15,000, yeah.
Okay. Because, because it looked, the numbers looked like they, they weren't quite as painful as I thought they were going to be.
And.
I just want to make sure we're still saving, even if we're, you know, even if we have bond payment. Still have stuff coming.
We need a capital reserve, capital improvement.
So this is some manage, some managers, and I, I don't know any offhand that do this, some managers will fluff a budget. I don't, I don't fluff a budget. This is an extremely honest budget. We, we do our best to, to, to keep it as low as possible.
I believe that.
That said, we did, you're right, the capital improvement was cut back a little bit, and that is stealing from the future.
Just needs to be noted, that's.
45,000.
But a good first class.
Yeah.
Yeah. Too much. All right. We'll review again at the, at your plan for the.
Yeah, so it's, it's a pretty small budget. I'm going to ask both water and sewer to come in at the next meeting. To review it with the board. But we have at least four meetings to do this, which I don't, I don't know if it'll take you guys that long.
Seems pretty. Got to be approved first week of July-ish or before that.
Before the first week of July, yeah. I think we could procrastinate that long.
We could, yeah.
Pretty good at it.
We could drag it out.
We are pretty good at it.
All right. Parking lot. Any items from that? Joe, you want to update or questions from the board?
Let me see your agenda. My agenda has run off on me. Worked on tax stabilization. The Adam Street Bridge, I'm working on that grant now. And the board is, are we on board with closing the alley? Should I move in that direction? Or is it?
I, I'm.
I think we should discuss maybe.
My, my two cents is if we end up, if you close the alley, you're not able to use additional parking from the street side if you're able to make some parking back there, get some parking. So I'm, I'm not sure I'm there at the alley closure. As a matter of fact, I was going to recommend taking it off the, the, the parking lot because our not putting salt down solved the problem it caused. So if the problem's solved, why would, I would want to see what the proposal is. And I, and I understand that, I, when I look at it, it's with, with better lighting and different things in, in that area, yeah.
I'm fine with it not being on there. I, it sounds like the problem was solved with, or it all yanked out of the.
I would just take it off.
Back up too, which helps us.
Oh, okay.
So that solved the.
Yeah.
The problem.
Well, yeah, some of it.
Yeah.
I, I'm all for taking it off our list for now. It's not a problem.
Other items on there for questions?
Well, resident of the year is still there, but we'll leave it for another month.
Monday, I'll make, Joel, you'll keep me on this and we'll bring that up.
Now that you're keeping a close eye on it.
I am. It's like the side box.
All right.
Can tax stabilization come out of the parking lot if it's on the agenda?
Oh, I was going to wait till you guys approved it.
Tell me.
All right. Board roundtable. Anybody for roundtable questions?
I have something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me find my glasses and can't find them. Oh, God.
You're actually wearing them.
What does it do with those glasses?
Well, I need no ones because I can't see. Thank you though for helping me. Very polite. Saying, you idiot. Joe had forwarded an email to all of us, I think, on Monday, from the Free Clinic in Rutland, which I am a volunteer at and I was on the board there, so I'm familiar with it. And I went over and talked with Tia Polino, who's the manager of it, our own Tia Polino from Fairhaven. They've got a grant from the United Way for every town in the county to start providing a clinic for education for dental needs. The grant is determined, is determined through a national event and our county has been chosen. So to me, it's a no-brainer and I'd be willing to lead it for our town because on top of being a nurse, I was a dental assistant for 10 years. And they're not looking for much. They, they'll manage the whole thing. So the clinic, you call Rutland if you want an appointment, they'll do all the screening, they'll do all the scheduling. And it would start in September. The grant goes through June of '22. So I'd be the liaison working with the other liaisons from other towns. They'll do all the advertising. And the clinic is really just for people to come in and talk to me about good oral hygiene. And then you do some health screenings within that and then get them set up with a provider. There's very few dental providers that will take these patients, but there's some. They do handouts, they'll give bags of dental supplies. It's just geared towards adults, although if they bring kids, they will bring them too. So I guess I'm, we need to decide if we want to be part of it or not. We don't have to be. But I have it written here, I think they only expect us to see if we get four people a month. But we have to provide the space. And it's just educational space, nothing's going to be hands-on here. So I didn't know if we could even use this room if it comes to that. Yes?
Yeah.
All right, I'll let her know tomorrow.
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to be a representative on it. And there's no, doesn't cost us anything.
She's doing everything and no money.
And no money, it's a, okay.
I'm not.
Good thing.
I'd be surprised if it was a big volume thing, but we can see. Hopefully it will grow more, so I'll let her know, Joe, and I'll copy you on it.
So the, the people that it serves, it's, the grant funds their dental care?
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah.
All right. Other item?
I got a call today, somebody hit a hole down by Stewart's. And I can't tell where it is and I, I drove down through there. I didn't see anybody working, I didn't see any holes. So I think it's just, just check with Aaron and see if we opened something up and closed it.
He did, they were working on the sewer lines down through there, cleaning out.
They hit a hole on, near Stewart's or a pole?
Hole, sorry. They'd opened like a manhole or something.
Correct. They were doing that.
No signs, nobody around, hole.
It's all signs that, a whole length of forest, barrels out there.
After.
After they hit the hole.
Person was like, yeah, now there's signs. There wasn't when they started. So I just want to make sure we're doing it. It could be nothing to it, I just want to make sure, throw a shot out there that let's get our signs up before we do our stuff.
I will.
It didn't sound like an Aaron thing. Usually he's right out there.
Well, he was, he was on location.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
All right, anything else, Jeff?
No, I shouldn't even take the time.
I'm good.
Okay. Review of financial reports. Jeff, do you have the expenditure revenue?
Yep.
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, $71,672.78.
Second.
Motion by Jeff for the general fund warrant, seconded by Rod. Questions on those? There was two payments right in another.
130, 30.
And.
30K to the beam.
Yeah.
Now, that's the total bill?
That was the total bill for that.
And that was insurance, right?
That's insurance.
And it, did it come within the insurance payment?
It came in a little under the insurance payment for the beam. We still have to install lights and reconnect the water. There's some water.
And, and are we doing that or?
We have a contract.
The contractors doing that?
Yeah, contractors are doing that.
Okay, other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to pay the payroll warrant, $29,413.78.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod for the payroll warrant. Questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And there's $417,924.74 in the checkbook. So that must mean there's a school payment coming.
All right. Executive session, we have three items.
Okay, make a motion, go into executive session for attorney-client privilege, 1 VSA 313A1 and contract negotiation, 1 VSA 313A1 and police chief contract, 1 VSA 313A3.
Is there a second? Motion by Glenn, seconded by Carol for the three items for executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries.